Call to order, the February 5th, 2020, meeting of the City of Ellsworth Planning Board. Let the members introduce themselves first thing.
Mark Rich.
Roger LeSart.
I'm John Delio, I'm the Vice Chair. I'll be sitting in for John Fink, who's the Chair, and he's not able to attend tonight.
Rick Lyles.
First order of business is the adoption of the minutes from the January 8th, 2020 meeting. Does anybody have any issues or additions or deletions to the minutes?
Mr. Vice Chairman, I'd like to make a motion we adopt the minutes for January meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to note, Items 3 and 4 are actually for the same item. We're going to go through a preliminary plan review and a final plan review. It's for revision to an existing major subdivision titled Joy Woods, Plan File 47-9 dated November 5th, 2019, for Lawrence Piazza. The amendment would split a 9.93 acre lot into two lots, creating Lot 6A, Tax Map 133, Lot 14-1, consisting of 7.82 acres, and Lot 7B, Tax Map 133, Lot 14-1-1, consisting of 2.11 acres. All the subject land is in the urban zone. Is there someone here representing an applicant?
Yes, sir. Malcolm Harriman, Lance Alveda.
Okay.
And we added a few extra bits of info. We sent out letters to historical admission of state and natural areas just as an extra bit of information suggested by the planning department. Also talked to Craig Koszabut on the DOT issue about empty permits. He is fine with this. The limit on this is Christian Ridge Road, so the city would be the one to make the judgments on empty permits. But we've added a right-of-way purposely on the existing road to go into that lot in the back. If you looked at the, on the plan, you'll see I put a little box in the upper right-hand corner of the lot. What that does is it takes in the existing driveway there and uses the land off to the right to get into this remaining land. And Craig had no idea about that.
Gotcha.
And other than that, I guess there's questions.
That was going to be one of my questions. You know, that box there, and it's highlighted in orange on the map of the lot. And is basically that right-of-way set on the current lot, 6B, because of wetlands to the right of the driveway, that you can't access 6A to them?
No, I think we can access it all right. We were just wanting to show that we have a very simple access by using the existing one. And I just held some of the existing land beside that, so it makes it easy, oversized right-of-way to use. It'll probably never be used, because we will have, we have the ability to put something further down. But this shows you people now that, in fact, we have something existing that gets into the remainder of the property.
John, the DOT has been reluctant to have multiple entrances along there. So that's why we thought it was wise to show it as a shared entrance. We know they would accept that. They did agree to, as long as the use in the vacant lot didn't become something with a lot of traffic, then that entrance would suffice. They could always apply for another entrance later, when they might be proposing a larger or some kind of development on that lot.
And you broke to the state? Or were in contact with the state about this?
Yes.
And did they get back to you? I guess that's the question.
Well, Craig Koszabut, I talked to him in person.
Okay. And they're good.
He's the one that usually for DOT comes in and spec's a site.
Okay.
And then ends up putting the info in back into DOT's engineer to do your permit. And he just gave me, basically, this, the urban line is such that the city would make the judgment on that.
Gotcha. Okay, that's where that came from. Okay, sorry.
And the other thing, too, is if a development gets large and does a lot of traffic, then the state can get involved.
Sure, right.
But at this point, he was fine with this.
And if I may, the size of that, it's bigger than a normal right-of-way, but it's to accommodate the fact that there's wetland within that box, so that they can get around the wetland without having to cross it with a new driveway or...
If they wanted to...
I mean, it's 74 feet wide.
Yep.
I mean, normally, the right-of-way would be a 50-foot right-of-way, correct?
Yeah. And I did that purposely, so we've got extra around it. We can come down and go off the edge of a wetland down below, go into upland, not going to use it.
I mean, if in the future, the other lot was developed and used as for a right-of-way, are they, are you going to be able to go across the current driveway to do your business?
Yeah, in the future, you could go to the podium, and they could get you on the mic.
There was a sort of a strategic plan for this entire 10 acres done a while ago, just for my own purposes. And you see this lot ends the property line towards town. The next lot between my current property and the Holden House is another 2-acre lot that I own, under a different name. And so, at some point, if we ever developed this remaining lot, DOT at one point said that we'd be able to put another entrance towards the Ellsworth side, away from the existing medical building. But we'd have to apply for it. But it would be justified based on traffic flow. Because honestly, if we had something significant, we wouldn't want them coming in through where patients are coming and going all the time, who are having trouble seeing. It wouldn't be, it would be safer to put another road entrance into the grander scheme in the future than it would be to use this existing right-of-way. But we did this to demonstrate that we, in fact, have access to residual property legally to get to it. So it's not, it's not a landlocked piece of land.
Okay, I just, I guess it's something that may come up in the future. I mean, say, you own a piece of property next to it. I just worry about a right-of-way to 6A coming through your parking lot may be impacting some parking places and...
Yeah, right now, the way it's drawn, it wouldn't. There's no parking where that road kind of would turn and pass the wetlands.
Okay.
But even so, I had even a mitigation looked at, if we had a road, say, not through my current driveway, but the other side of the, where the wetlands start.
Right.
You see that wetlands goes diagonally, but just that swath of wetlands, when it starts to dry up again, that's where the road was proposed, because it would go down the center of the entire lot, and then be able to access the back lot to the right, the back lot to the left, as well as service the road frontage remaining that is contiguous to the 2 acres that I own towards town. So it would be a one big project. And by crossing over that diagonal wetlands enough to get the road over it, we'd have to mitigate other land in the back, but we have enough land to mitigate to do that. And so, it's all been looked at, just that we'd have to apply for it.
What we got really is kind of prelim planning things. We've got the answers that tell us if we can do something like this, if we do something in the future.
And even if we use the existing driveway, the way you'd come in, there's actually grass to the left before you hit parking spots. And before you actually hit the parking spots, there is, you peel off to the left and drive along the wetlands. You wouldn't cross over the wetlands. You wouldn't have to even mitigate. But the likelihood of us doing that, if we did something larger, would be low. It's just that we'd probably propose a bigger project in the remaining lot, the 2-acre lot contiguous to mine, and build something that made sense from the DOT standpoint or the city's standpoint, that it would provide enough safe access.
I also noticed, on the left of Lot 6B on the big diagram, you have a 25-foot utility easement.
Yeah, that's because when we built the original building, my builder ran conduits along that property line that Mac didn't know about. And I said, "Look, if we ever, if I ended up owning that particular building lot, the medical building lot, we wanted an easement to be able to utilize that, those conduits underground to feed water, sewer, and three-phase power to the back end of the existing property, 6, what is it, 6B, the back part of the property."
6A.
6A. So we wouldn't have to traverse, I mean, we would just want to be able to access those conduits while we're building in the back, and that's why the easement's there. But those conduits exist already. They're just not, there's no plumbing right now. There's just big conduits to allow us to feed plumbing for the sewer and feed plumbing for water. We probably have to, you know, enhance it, but we didn't want to lose our ability to use that if we developed a back lot.
I notice on this diagram, along the same, kind of looks like corridor in yellow, is that 10-foot yellow line referring to the setback?
10-foot setback. Just to show you where the 10-foot setback line is.
So I'd ask the staff, is there any conflict with the setback? I mean, the setback and the utility easement appear to be the same place? I mean, is...
But the setback is for structures. And I don't think...
Above ground structures.
Right.
And the utilities are actually underground.
And I put a 25-foot wide easement, just common sense, if you've got to work on it, you've got room to do it. So that was...
I mean, we wouldn't need a 25-foot swath to actually finish the utility work, but we want the ability to actually access that and dig up what we need to while we're developing remaining utilities at some future point.
Anybody have any other questions? This is a public hearing. It's a one-point of public hearing. See if there's anybody like to address it, considering the fact that there's no one else here. I'll close the public hearing. Now, on this part of it, for the preliminary plan, all the board needs to do is find that the application is complete, and then we'll move on to the final plan review. We have to have a motion for the preliminary plan review to find that submission is complete.
Move that the board has found that the preliminary plan review for revision of an existing major subdivision entitled Joy Woods is complete.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Jeff, is that sufficient for the board, for the motion? Jeff?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I didn't say all the other stuff about plot maps and so forth. I just said the first line. Is that sufficient?
You intend to include that?
Yes, yes. And I wouldn't mind at all if she included that.
Yes, yes. A little cut and paste there.
All in favor?
Aye.
So now, we'll go on to Item 4, which is the final plan review for revision to existing major subdivision titled Joy Woods, Plan File 47-9, dated November 5th, 2019, for Lawrence Piazza. The amendment would split a 9.93 acre lot into two lots, creating Lot 6A, Tax Map 133, Lot 14-1, consisting of 7.82 acres, and Lot 6B, Tax Map 133, Lot 14-1-1, consisting of 2.11 acres. All the subject land is in the urban zone. Where this is a final plan, I'll open a public hearing again. And again, I don't think there's anybody here to address it. I'll close the public hearing. Does the board have any other questions? Basically, for the, I mean, it's the same project. If you happen to think of anything else you wanted to ask.
No, you're gonna, I saw, right, a carriage road, you're gonna fix this so this town will eventually take over it?
If I built a road down the center?
Yeah.
There's even some talk about connecting it to the Woodlawn Museum property, so they could have...
Oh, really?
Fire access roads, so it's easier to access with fire trucks and such.
Right.
Yeah, if I built a road to that scale to get to the back, I'd build it to specs of the city and then donate it, because I don't want to maintain it.
Right.
And the city may not accept it, though, right?
It may not.
That's right.
Yeah, it may not.
I mean, it's good if you'd offer a dotted line.
We'll build it so you'll like it. If we build it.
Yeah, if.
Any other questions?
Motion?
Yes, I would like a motion.
Motion to accept the final plan for revision of an existing major subdivision entitled Joy Woods, and all the rest of the stuff is understood.
I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Item 5, proposed amendments and additions to Chapter 56, Unified Development Ordinance, Article 3, Zoning Districts, Article 14, Definitions, and Article 8 Performance Standards. Proposed amendments will create additional categories and allowable uses in Article 3, Section 307, Table of Land Uses. Create additional entries in Article 14, Definitions, and we add the following sections for Article 8 Performance Standards. Section 823, Solar Energy Systems. Section 814, Energy Storage Systems. And Section 825, Facility Operations, Maintenance, Decommissioning, and Abandonment. I will turn the presentation over to Jeff.
Vice Chairman, and the board, thank you for coming out tonight. Most of you were here last month for the first presentation of this. Received some good comments and questions, and we responded to those. The draft that you have this month is quite different in some ways, and a lot of it's the same, but I had started putting together a draft that showed the strikeouts and the new additions underlined, and it became so unworkable to read that I decided to just give you a clean copy. It's only three pages, so I think reading it from scratch fresh is a better approach. So what I'd like to do is walk through what's been changed, and maybe, you know, you'd like to ask questions along the way, making some comments. So the, make it, so I don't forget it, the table of land uses was only changed in one way. The line which reads "Power Generating Facilities Stand Alone" has just been struck out. That whole category has been, is waiting for a future revision if we ever need it. So now to the text. Excuse me. On the definitions, we took out all of those that were related to power generating facilities, and added a few words here and there. We added a couple of extra definitions that would help clarify the, like, the difference between energy storage systems accessory and energy systems stand alone. So we added the accessory definitions for energy storage and for solar energy, so that it just became clearer, you know, what the distinction of those were, instead of trying to do it in one definition. The definitions for solar energy systems, small scale, medium scale, and large scale, were simplified. Remember, we're just now relying on the square footage of the actual panels to decide what size the system is, and not mentioning the output, because this was correctly pointed out last month, it could change, and it just kind of confused people as to which one is the standard. So we have one standard based on the size. Any questions about the definitions?
Just on the, on the small scale, medium scale, large scale, we talked last time about whether these are kind of like accepted standards or delineations or whatever. Any news on that? I mean, is that like, if we say, "Oh, we have a small scale," whatever?
Yes.
Will everyone in the industry understand what that means?
Probably not.
Okay.
But as far as, on the regulatory side, it's the closest thing to a standard set that I have found.
Okay. Fair enough.
And do we have any, I mean, the small scale, I mean, basically is a system that goes on somebody's roof.
Yeah.
I mean, so far, I mean, have the systems that have been installed in Ellsworth been under that figure? Or do we have some of that?
We may have had one that was over 1,000 panels, possibly. Over 100 panels.
Oh, 100 panels.
Yeah. That was a commercial building. They did one whole side of that building, so that's probably over 100 panels.
But I mean, for most, are residentials' installations been under that 1,750 square feet?
They've all been under that, yeah.
Okay, so basically, I mean, the residential unit's not going to be considered a medium scale?
I do have one kind of overarching question. When we take this, you know, as a whole, the pile of regulations, are they meant to apply to add-ons to existing development buildings? In other words, if I have a building and I say, "Hey, I want to do a solar thing," are these regulations meant to apply to that kind of installation? Or would that be a code enforcement kind of thing? Like, you know, any modification to your house would be? And following up on that, okay? So let me ask it all at once. Is it, or is it meant to apply to any new development which includes a solar array? Okay, so I had a building with a solar array, so that's new. Or is it meant to apply to any single-use installation, meaning like, this is a solar farm thing? Or is it meant to apply to all those things?
Well, potentially all.
Okay.
I mean, you kind of have to go through, any project now, you have to figure out how it applies. And, you know, the first step is to, is to look at it and see if it's a major or a minor use. And then, so those have different sets of standards.
Okay.
Of course, major comes to planning board. And one of the things, so you saw, hopefully, that the amendment that I put there to kind of clarify that question, it was on the very bottom of your pile.
Oh, right.
So I'm trying, amending one part of the draft, we had another discussion within the staff, and I think it was a good point to clarify, because these things are difficult, and we realized that going with the square footage, and, you know, you might have some little outbuildings, and you have the area of the panels, and so it became complicated to decide whether it's a major or minor. So we decided to say that a small system is minor, medium, or large is major. So just to make it, cut that line.
Okay, so if I, if I had a building, let's say it's a commercial building of some sort, and it's in an area where I can have one of these solar things, and I wanted to put, you know, a bunch of stuff on top, okay? And whether it's the small one or the medium one, but the building is already there, how would the media mechanism, what kind of hoops would they have to jump through to do that? Would they come before the planning board? Is it a code enforcement thing?
Typically, if it's under 100 panels, they'll go through our office.
Okay, okay.
And we don't, we only gather a permit on the electrical work itself and the components.
Okay.
We're not really looking at the number, we'd never gone out and counted how many panels are up on a roof.
Okay.
Because we will now, but, you know, so it's an electrical permit is what they're going to get from us.
Okay.
To do the work.
Okay.
Because it's not considered a structure, so it wouldn't be a building permit.
Okay.
And what's the square footage of a single panel?
Depends.
They will also submit to us a diagram as to what they're going to do, as far as the fire department is concerned, because of the layout on the roof as to some of the requirement, minimum requirements, as to how those are laid out as part of an application process or whatever. So we're requiring them to do that.
And another thing with the retrofit is they have to prove that the structure of the building can support...
Right, I saw the thing with the dead load and all that, yeah.
But, I mean, to follow up Rick's, I mean, if somebody had a building already built and came in, and wanted to put up 1,751 square feet of solar panels, the way I read it, that would come to the planning board.
Even though, even though the building is already existing, or could be existing?
Right.
Whether it exists or not?
Anything over 100 panels would come to the planning board.
Comes here somehow or another.
Okay, fair enough.
It would be looking at like an addition, that would be a major addition. That would also come to planning board.
Right.
Okay, fair enough.
Any other questions on the definition? So if we get to the performance standards, notice we took out the part of Power Generating Facility Definitions and Standards, and then we kind of moved up, took that out, and so now these are, 823 is now the new number for solar energy systems. We added a couple of words here, so solar energy systems standalone or accessory are energy collecting structures composed of imperfect components. And the rest of it's the same as it was last month. We added Part A, excuse me, application and permit fees, application fees, oh, right, yeah. In the, if you're looking at the amended version, it says, "Application and permit fees as, and, application, permit fees, and review." And I didn't bring the amendment. Can I borrow that to the, so I can read the right one? So this is the one we're proposing now. If you happen to like the old version, we could go back to it. So Part A says, "Application permit fees and level of review. Application fees shall be based on the total area of the solar panels calculated for lot coverage below," because there's kind of a break under certain circumstances for that, considering the sharing of the use. "Plus the floor area of any proposed buildings. The disturbed area portions calculated separately as usual." So we took out the line that says, "These figures will be used to determine whether the project is considered a minor or major development plan review per Section 604," because you realize how complicated it could be at times. So now we say, "Permit fees for solar panels are based on the electrical code. All medium-scale and large-scale SES shall be reviewed by the planning board as major use site plan developments." So we'll go back to the original draft. So looking at B. So this was one that we discussed last month on height. Added a couple of provisions there. Hopefully, that will take care of our concerns, but height says, "Solar panels up to 3 feet above a roof on which they are mounted may be ignored in building height measurements unless the panels block a scenic view or creates a nuisance condition."
I guess I have some questions, or it seems to be awful subjective. You know, with one person's scenic view is, you know, the other neighbor doesn't care, or creates a nuisance condition. I'm not sure what...
Unless scenic view and nuisance are defined someplace else, which I don't think there are.
Well, they are, they are a concept that the code office uses a lot. Dwight, would you speak to that, as to what a nuisance is?
Well, we have nuisances under Title 17 of the statutes. We also reference nuisances in uniform ordinances, and I think it's under Section, Article 8, there's a list of things. It can be, I don't know if it's anything to do with stealing someone's sunlight or anything like that. And I think that's what, I think that's what you're alluding to, is someone, if it's a structure that's high enough, you know, and I wasn't here last month, but the reference to height off the roof came up, whether it was going to shade the neighbor and things like that. You know, I think those are good questions to look at. I don't see anything, these larger solar arrays aren't going to be near homes, anyway. They're going to, the ones that are looking at Ellsworth now, they're all in rural areas. We haven't had anyone in the, the only district that really causes a problem is downtown, where you don't have a setback on property lines, where someone could actually have a roof to... Where someone could actually have a rooftop unit that could, you know, block ten to fifteen feet, shade ten to fifteen feet on either side of them. But the people that are looking now is, we, we got people out on the Bayside Road looking and out on one eighty and places like that. And they're all big rural areas and they're all, they're all over ten acres.
So the, and those are actual farms.
Farms on the ground, yeah, yeah, yeah. You know.
When, um, this goes, I mean, that's good. I like that explanation. But, um, when, um, uh, when you look at the height of a building, so, you know, as Bob comes in or Sally comes in with a new building and says, okay. You know, there's a height restriction on this building, okay? And whether it's two stories or, or whatever in number of feet. The question is, when you, when you say, gee, does this meet a height restriction? Does that include mechanicals and stuff that may be sitting on the roof?
No.
Or mechanicals go, they can go on up?
Right, antennas and things, devices like that aren't included in that height, that's typically.
Or a power, I mean, or how about a cooling unit or something like that?
Yeah, it's typically, it's typically the ridge is what we look at, the height of the ridge.
Of the, of the building itself?
Right.
Not counting the mechanicals and stuff?
But even the ones on the, on the, well, it's the tennis center was the one I was talking about, they put a, a lingerie on their roof. They don't have much of a pitch there, but it's, it's relatively flat onto the roof. Most of these, we don't have any that have built up more than six or eight inches anywhere.
Because of, because of.
Because they have, because we're in Maine, we have that hitch.
Okay.
You know.
So maybe the, maybe the thing about the scenic blocking and all that, uh, maybe if we just change that to, uh, you know, above the ridge line.
I think Mike can add to that too, because part of the fire department, his ordinance, they have to have a corridor you can walk around and you can address that better.
So, yeah, there's requirements for center, center pathways and perimeter pathways.
And, and the array itself.
That's correct, on the roof. Um, and when we start talking about height, um, right now, in, in the order, in the codes that I have to enforce, uh, the building code, for example, will just take roof structures. Building code allows for, um, penthouses or dormers on roofs up to eighteen feet above the roof level.
Wow.
That's in the building, that's in the building code. Um, in NFPA ninety.
That blocks a scenic view.
Yeah, in NFPA ninety-six, where we have vents for cooking hoods and stuff like that in restaurants. The actual height of a fan for that cooking hood is required to be forty-two inches above the roof line.
Okay. And, and the, and the roof line could be maxed out on.
Correct.
For whatever it is for that zone.
Um, chimneys and vents for wood stoves, et cetera, need to be three feet above the roof ridge line or three feet above the ten-foot vertical line on the roof. So you have all these things that are required that are well over the three-foot marks.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Three-foot, three-foot, um, measurement.
It's modest in that context.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then you have air handling units that could be six feet high.
Right.
That you can walk into, so I mean, we're talking, three feet is, is a good number, I think.
Okay. So while we might take issue with some of this other stuff, a whole bunch of things would be.
Absolutely.
In the same ballpark.
Absolutely.
So.
I mean, it seems nowadays, I mean, the solar panels, like you say, seem to be more flat to the roof.
Correct.
I mean, I, I think to open up the possibility of somebody like with, with wind turbines, you know, people are against it because you're ruining my view. You know, a piece of property that's two miles away from somebody.
Yep.
Well, you're right, it is, it is a subjective standard, uh, to, to some extent. I mean, there is some substance to it, but people would have to make a case that, that this is interfering with, with something or creating a, you know, a nuisance. Like, like Dwight described one example. And, and you really can't imagine what it might be, but at least it gives you, you know, you asked a question last month, are we serious about building height standards? So this says, yeah, I mean, we're, we're allowing some deference to these things because people look at them as, as a, you know, an improvement of beneficial improvement to a structure. And so the, the shape of the roof can be quite different. If you had a building that was a flat roof at the maximum height and they wanted to put panels on, you know, they, and, and a flat roof, you probably have to tip them up to get.
Sure.
So you, you know, three feet is what you're going to need to, to put.
To be able to tip it at all.
Put those on there. At a minimum.
Okay, well, and the idea that, that this is consistent with, you know, allowing other mechanical stuff on the roof. Uh, and have, not having it count against the, the height limitation, I mean, that's, it's kind of like a precedent there or something, I suppose. But I, but I, but I do agree with what, what, uh, John said about the, you know, the kind of the ambiguity of simp- scenic view and, and nuisance or whatever. I mean, it's kind of like, that looks like a, you know, like an issue waiting to be, to be litigated down the line someplace. And I, and, you know, and the thing is, if, if it is, you know, if you make it tighter, then that simply doesn't happen or, or is less likely to happen. So, anyway.
I mean, it would only happen in an urban area, very likely.
Sure.
Uh, where we're not really allowing the big ones, um, but, and, and only if, if the roof is already, you know, up near the maximum height or at the maximum height. So the, the, the likelihood of that becoming a problem is not very big.
You've talked me down off of that one then.
Yeah, okay.
Off the roof, exactly. I was hoping they wouldn't pick up on that.
Yes, I'm kind of on the, along the definitions. And I'll reference, what we talked about last month a little, uh, where it seems like the possibility exists that a solar array could be put in a, a landfill. Now, if there was an energy storage system along with that development, I mean, would that be an accessory or a standalone? I'm a little, I mean, it would most likely feed the power grid, but I'm, you know, or does it feed the city?
I would look at that as accessory use.
What's that?
I would look at that as an accessory use because it's not needed without the solar panels.
If there was a small building on the, that's part of the.
Right, if you don't have the solar panels, you don't need an energy storage system.
Gotcha.
So the energy storage, in my mind, the panels are the primary.
Thing.
Use and the accessory structure would be the storage. Most of these places won't have storage, probably.
So if you, if you read the definition of energy storage systems accessory, the last statement says, to be considered as accessory. ESS shall be designed with appropriate storage capacity to serve the principal use only and not the electrical power grid. But, so what it means is, uh, you know, in my mind anyway, the capacity of that, of that storage unit is, is similar in the size to the solar array. So it's, it's storing that, it's storing that, um, that energy to be released into the grid. When, when, uh, you know, the, the power, you know, value goes up, I think that's how they, they deal with it. You know, if you, if you had, had a, if you had a solar array that you're proposing and you wanted to put a, a, a storage system alongside it. But it was gargantuan, way bigger than the, than the, than the solar array, then we would say, well, okay, you can do that if you're in, if it's allowed use. But we won't consider an accessory use.
Now Dwight, about a year ago, I mean, I think, I believe it actually made it on the agenda, but got pulled, was the outfit that wanted to put in.
The commercial energy storage facility, yeah.
Which was going to be.
One eighty.
Right, now, now that, that unit there would have been a standalone, correct?
Yes.
But now, although that, I mean, that location there was, was next to the industrial park or the business park. Because I see where the standalones are only allowed in industrial park and the business park. And I think the lot that it would have been on actually was outside the business park. I mean, obviously where it's next to the business park, there could be a zone change.
Yeah, could be, yeah.
But, I mean, do you foresee, I mean, if somebody wants to put in a, a standalone. I mean, the business, the business park industrial zones are very small.
Right, right, the reason I look at those zones, they have to have a transmission line going by them.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the biggest thing. The cost of them building the transmission line to, to get to where, to a substation would just be, you know.
So, uh, the industrial zone, I mean, industrial is just a, like a small area on the Bucksboro Road.
Right.
And, I mean, are, are sufficient power lines located in other parts of the city that a standalone system can talk into?
I think, I think there's four or five substations in the area. They need to be near a, a transmission line, the substation. Because what they're going to do is they're going to buy energy at a low.
Right.
Low kill watt price from there, store it until it's peak and sell it back.
Yeah, we got substations.
The, the reason to limit the, the, um, the, the zones that they are allowed in is because of the safety issues that come up regarding them. They're full of, you know, hazardous materials and things. And so i- if you look at the other zones, like if you said, we're going to put them in the neighborhood zone, I mean, it could end up next to something you, you certainly wouldn't want it next to. The rural is similar, I mean, there are, it, it's certainly more variety of things that are allowed in rural. But you still have that same potential. And, uh, so we figured, you know, at this point, we didn't want to make a big, uh, we didn't want it, this to become, you know, a major issue. We'd rather be more restrictive with it. If we find, find that we needed, you know, to change it down the line, you know, either a, a zone change could happen if there was an appropriate site. We wish we had contract zoning, that's something we, we'd like to have, uh, after the next comp plan. Because it has to be, it has to be, uh, enabled in the comp plan and then put into the, so it's, it's going to be years before that. But that's the kind of thing that these are for. You know, you, you don't want them anywhere, you can't, you, you have a hard time saying, yeah, we're going to allow it in this zone. Yeah, there may be places in the zone where it would be appropriate, but, um, um, other places where it wouldn't be. And then you have a hard time saying no if something's proposed, so. Yeah, um, that's the thinking anyway. We ready to move on? I was at, um, point C of eight twenty-four, lot coverage. And this was reworded. Solar energy systems or portions thereof may be exempted from lot coverage standards. Rooftop systems do not count further toward the lot coverage. If SES are located over live ground cover with sufficient special, with sufficient space between the panels and above the ground to allow sunlight for vegetation to grow. Half the area of the panels would be considered structure area for lot coverage calculations due to sharing of the space. Excuse me. And as we talked about last month, uh, there's very, there's only one upland zone, which would be the commercial zone that has any standard that this would affect. That's the, the commercial zone has a seventy-five percent lot coverage. So that would allow, you know, a bigger array in a, in a commercial zone than you could get by the, um, you know, the, the lot coverage standard. And then in the, in most of the shoreline zoning, it's a twenty percent lot coverage. And, um, it gets a little higher in the, um, general development zone.
So this means that the, it could be, the coverage could be higher than seventy-five percent then? We're going to.
Yeah.
We can exempt it, right?
Yeah.
So it could be a hundred?
Well, it, it probably, it wouldn't reach a hundred because of other things, you know, buffers and things, but.
Okay, so that, that, that was the follow-up question from setbacks and buffers. Uh, because, because that says basically, you know, here, here are the setbacks that you have to adhere to.
Yeah.
Okay? And so what you're saying is that with, if that makes some sort of, you know, margin around that lot, that it could still be eighty percent of the coverage. But would have to be within the area defined by the setbacks.
Yes, yes.
You know, so in a forested area, they have to trim that buffer back at an angle so that they don't shade the panels.
Right.
So their buffer actually widens out a little bit.
Right.
To, to get the angle they need, yeah.
Gotcha.
We'll see that, well, it's in the next section, it wasn't changed, so I wasn't going to talk about it, but I could, but that it came up. Yeah, so it wouldn't help a whole lot, you know, in, in, uh, in that and probably the, uh, in the shoreline zone with a twenty percent coverage. It's very unlikely that anybody's going to want to use any of that on a solar array. A stand up, you know, one that's off by itself, you probably have to put it on the roof or you wouldn't have room for it. You know, some, some of them do have larger lots that would accommodate some more, but.
Does the language may be exempted, does that get us in any kind of trouble? I mean, so, and it's permissive, right? I mean, as opposed to shall or.
Yeah.
Whatever, I mean, this may get us in trouble?
I don't think so, it still falls back to the, to the opinion of the planning board, decision of the planning board.
Okay.
And I guess, you know, if they don't ask for it to be exempted, then they just go by the logic.
I wouldn't think, right?
Yeah. And then, uh, sections G and H have been added, so I'll read those.
Oh, wait, you skip right over stormwater.
Well, it didn't change, so I wasn't going to read it, but we certainly can.
Okay, I got, I got one, 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 uh, one comment, I guess. And the last sentence, it says, in some cases, only the area blah, 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 okay? It seems to me that, um, the area of support footings, that that, it's not some cases, I mean, don't we, wouldn't we want that all the time?
Well.
So that it would read, the area of support footings are, is considered impermeable for stormwater calculations? Because I mean, these, these are like, like foundations that would come, our pillar, pads that come up out of the ground, right?
Yeah.
And they're concrete or something, right?
Answer that a second.
Oh, sure.
Some, that is true, yes, sometimes and no.
Okay.
There is a solar array system going into the southern part of the state that they're actually using a auger type of system.
Okay.
That actually has no concrete. It literally drives itself into the ground and then they mount it to those augers. So there's nothing there other than a piece of pipe and then the blades that go down in there. They're building houses with that type of stuff now. So, so they're using that kind of a system to mount these solar array panels on.
Okay.
So the cross-section of the auger is like that? That's, yeah.
So that is, that is an option that they can use for those.
Sure.
Yep.
The other thing is, so what we realized in looking at these things, um, you know, they're probably becoming more standardized, but there's a lot of, uh, of different situations that they use. Some, some even like put it over, over the top of a, of a paved area.
Right.
So that would be.
Oh, sure, like a parking lot or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any more questions before G?
No, just jump right along.
Okay. Signage. Signs shall be installed at medium scale and large scale ground-mounted SES that shall identify the owner and provide twenty-four hour emergency contact phone number. Reason for that is that it may not be a manned site, so if there's a problem there, you know, you can go and find the call. Uh, H, operations, maintenance and decommissioning plan. Applications for large-scale standalone systems shall submit a plan pursuant to section eight twenty-five of this ordinance. And that's the new section that we have to look at in its entirety when we get to that. Eight twenty-four, energy storage systems, we added.
Oh, yes. So H would only apply if it was over forty thousand square feet?
Yes. We, we could say medium and large, you know. It seemed to us, I guess, when we talked it over, that the, the risk to the city for a, an acre system is, you know, maybe doesn't rise to the need for this kind of thing. If you're thinking about, you know, what the cost would be to clean up one that's acres and acres, um, you know, to kind of take the, the curse out. But we, we could certainly put that medium in if that's what your recommendation is. Just, um, I don't know what the sense is for, um, at, you know, what point do we feel the need for that kind of protection, um, on these things?
I mean, I just, I mean, we haven't had any history with it. I mean, I'm just curious how, you know, a thirty thousand square foot solar panels, I mean, how many? If, if somebody just walks away from that, is.
Yeah.
Does that create an issue for the city? You know, twenty thousand, thirty thousand?
It, it could, I mean, you know, the only time it really is a problem. It, it could, I mean, you know, the only time it really is a problem, i- I suppose, is if the land it's sitting on isn't worth anything. You know, I mean, if they're walking away and then, and the city ends up getting it for taxes or just needs to clean it up as a nuisance, um, yeah, that could be a problem. You know, it, this is a call that we have to make and, you know, if you'd prefer to have medium and large, we can certainly add that. To, to, the, the potential for the large ones is really where the, you know, the, the major cost for a cleanup would be.
But, 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 you know, the, the, the cut between medium and large is an acre of stuff, which seems like a lot of potential stuff to me.
Yep.
There were some que- with this whole decommissioning thing or whatever, there was a, um, Dan mentioned the other day or last week about, uh, who was it, Rockland or somebody was doing one of these or had a new ordinance, right, was it Rockland? Anyway, so my question is, is there experience from other places that say what the cutoff is for having to do a decommissioning plan?
Well, most of our, our section eight twenty-five came from the town of Winslow.
Okay.
And, and they, they used it for the large systems.
Okay. And they, and their cut for the large system was roughly the same as what you've proposed here?
Yeah, so, you know, we, we don't have to go the same way that they do, um, but we kinda followed that lead and, um, you know, the idea is, you know, mitigating a possible great cost for the city. I mean, the, the real risk for these things is not, you know, five years into it, but it's, you know, twenty years into it when the panel's not worth much anymore. But.
I would think if, if medium scale and large scale are gonna be required to come to the planning board, I mean, I think we should have H also apply to medium scale. I mean, there may be some things in that de- decommissioning plan that possibly could be waived for medium, but, I mean, if a medium's gotta come to the planning board, I think we should require that they, they have a decommissioning plan.
I tend to agree with that, actually.
So we're up to half, one more and we have a majority.
I, I think he's right, I can go along with that.
Okay. Now, we can easily amend that and we'll just kinda add it to the motion, you know, about any.
A friendly fix.
Yes. Okay. I will write it down here somewhere. So eight twenty-four, uh, energy storage systems, um, we added something to the end of that paragraph. And it says, and signage identifying the owner and a twenty-four hour emergency contact phone number. Applicants shall include all means of disabling the system in the event of an emergency. Standalone systems shall submit an operations, maintenance and decommissioning plan per section eight twenty-five of this ordinance. Eight twenty-five?
Well, let's go back to H. Applicants for large scale standalone, I mean, we wanna put in medium scale. Does it really make a difference whether, I mean, especially a large scale? Could a large scale be incorporated in a building, I mean, is a large scale scan standalone just without a building, I mean, let's say Walmart wants to put in a, a large scale solar but it, that's not standalone though, is it?
So you're talking about an energy storage system?
Well, no, uh, under H, operations, maintenance, decommissioning plan, applicants for a large scale standalone system. But let's say somebody wants to put in a, a large scale system on their building or in their lot.
So your, your objective to stand, the standalone word being there?
I mean, if somebody wanted to put out fifty thousand square feet of solar panels for their specific building.
Yeah.
Well, that would automatically come to the planning board.
Yeah, but, but the, the way I read it though, they wouldn't have to submit an operations, maintenance and decommissioning plan because that would be an accessory.
Well, well, if you put a system like on the roof of Walmart, are they gonna abandon that system? I mean, you know, you, you've got a whole building there, you've got the value of the whole parcel of it, so it may not, you know, the, the risk doesn't seem to be the same as, as something just standing out in a field, you know, and somebody walks away from it.
I'm not totally sure I agree with that, I mean, you know, people are walking away from, you know, big box stores, right?
Yeah.
Um, which may or may not have a solar array on, a big solar array on, on top of them down the line.
We could take standalone out, you know, that, that would, that would ma- make it, make it apply to anything that's, um, medium or large.
I would go along with that.
Yeah, I think I'd be happier.
We've got two.
Yeah, definitely be happier.
We've got three, alright, we'll take out standalone.
Yeah, and, and add in medium.
Yes, add in medium.
Add in medium, so we, we give it and take it away.
Yeah, and, and as we look at, at, you know, the, the plans, that, there is some discretion at, at the, you know, by the administrator, which would be you guys in this case, as to, you know, what's, what's gonna be acceptable, you know, what, what do we, what do we expect from them? And there's a lot of choices in there, so. Some of these, you know, may not be costly at all for certain, you know, if you're a large corporation and you can guarantee it somehow, you know, they don't have to go out and get a bond or whatever, they have, they have financial guarantees that they can, um, arrange routinely probably. So we're ready for eight twenty-five?
One last question, eight twenty-four, you guys okay with the references to the fire codes and F, NFPA things and stuff?
Absolutely, I was the one that actually gave them those numbers.
I like that, I like that circle closing, that's good.
Well, the idea was, um, you know, if you ever looked at how much there is in these codes on, on these systems.
That's why he sits there.
Yes, yes, we, uh, we certainly don't want to reiterate what they're doing and, and so that it's well covered from a safety aspect on those. So eight twenty-five, facility operations, maintenance, decommissioning and abandonment. Applicability, this section outlines plans, so, I'll just read it and then explain. This section outlines plans for facility operations, maintenance and decommissioning where specifically required by provisions of this ordinance or were ordered at the discretion of the project administrator. Grounds for requiring a proposed facility to provide these plans by the project administrator include those serving specialized industries with limited reuse potential for improvements. Those with known substantial obsolescence and/or the presence of significant amounts of hazardous materials. Abandonment procedures are activated by conditions described below. So the idea is, this is not just for solar systems or, or energy storage, but it's a, we're, we're directly applying it to those, but it could be applied for any project if, if some of these, these conditions are, are seen and there's a, there's a concern.
Only one question, who, who is the project administrator in this context?
Yeah, that, that's the terminology used in, in, uh, in the unified development ordinance to describe whether it's, whether it's, uh, the planning board or the code officer, uh, so, you know.
But it's one of those people?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
If it comes to the planning board, we're the project administrator.
Yeah, alright, I.
Right, so I guess it's possible.
I, I stand enlightened.
Yeah, okay.
Me too.
Operations, maintenance and decommissioning plans shall include, A, a twenty-four hour emergency contact name, title and phone number, B, procedures for safe access and shutdown by emergency responders, C, general maintenance schedule for the facility including a removal replacement plan for major components during the lifespan of the facility, D, a decommissioning plan that shall include the following. We okay up till there? One, an estimated date of decommissioning of the proposed facility based on the average lifespan of the major components that would need to be removed per below. Two, provisions of the removal from the site of all structures, equipment and systems that are not demonstrated to have potential continued use. And three, provisions for the disposal of all solid and hazardous waste in accordance with local, state and federal waste disposal regulations. Four, provisions for the stabilization and revegetation of the site as necessary to minimize erosion. Five, an estimated cost to implement the decommissioning plan at the estimated date of decommissioning accounting for the anticipated sale of usable components and scrap from the facility. And six, provisions of financial assurance of the performance per below. Good? E, financial assurance of performance. Based on the estimated cost to implement the decommissioning plan at the estimated date of decommissioning, the applicant shall demonstrate in form of a performance bond, surety bond, letter of credit, parent company guarantee or other form of financial assurance as may be acceptable to the administrator that upon the end of the useful life of the facility, the applicant will have the necessary financial assurance in place for a hundred percent of the total cost of decommissioning. The applicant may propose securing the necessary financial assurances and phases as long as the total required financial assurance is in place a minimum of five years prior to the estimated date of decommissioning of the facility. The funds for decommissioning must also be securely made available for use by the city of Ellsworth in the event of abandonment per below. Financial assurance provisions must be noted on the final site plan and must be transferred with the development if it is sold.
Okay, let's talk about the sentence in the middle. Basically, the applicant may propose securing the financing, the necessary financial assurance and phases, that's, that's phrase there.
Yes.
Let me, I'm totally opposed to that, and let me throw out a scenario. The person says, to make sure I understand what you're trying to say, the person says, okay, this is, this is a twenty year lifespan, okay, I wanna set up the, the financial assurances and phases, I'm gonna, I can give you ten percent, I'll give you ten percent. You're requiring at year fifteen, he has to have the hundred percent in place. Let's say five years into the plan, he disappears. You have, you know, maybe twenty percent of the financial assurance for the decommissioning? That doesn't fly in my book.
God defeats the purpose.
Well, I guess, you know, it would be an assur- an assurance if, if there wasn't a, you know, a mechanism to make sure that that couldn't, couldn't blow up in the process, and I don't know if there is that. I will thank the town of Winslow for that language, and if you don't like it, you know, we, we, we could certainly take that out without, you know, hurting the rest of it, that the phase part, I don't think is necessary. I think the idea is that, you know, there's a concern that if, it just seems too onerous for an applicant, that they, um, you know, might just go build it somewhere else and if you want it built here, then, you know, you don't wanna have the, have too high of a hurdle for that. But, you know, if they, if they can't work out something, you know, without the phase plan, then they're probably not gonna make it work.
Well, it seems, it seems like if, if, if a phased plan was something that was pretty common, okay, if you, if you, if you require a hundred percent.
Yeah.
And they came back and said, oh, well, we want this phased plan, and that's kinda like the industry standard or whatever, seems like that might be legitimately negotiable with the, with the planning board or the city or whoever. I, I mean, I have, I have no, no clear sense of stuff like, of what we're talking, I mean, I, I get the idea, but I don't know what the, uh, cost of the, cause it's some, some sort of insurance policy, I assume, and, uh.
Well, I'm not a financial guy either, I don't know if there's anybody here that could speak to it, that has worked with this kinda stuff before, but, um.
I was kinda hoping Mr. Cole would.
Not that I know that much, but, I was just thinking that perhaps the language could be flexible to allow you all to use your good judgment. As, I mean, the goal is to ensure that the city isn't stuck having to remove solar panels at a site. So perhaps put the flexibility of the tools in front of the planning board to have enough assurances that that won't happen. I'm not quite sure what the phasing strategy was, uh, I would say this though, uh, not all solar panels, obviously, even on standalones are done on fee simple sites. There are cases where they're leasing it from property owners. So one would think that property owner wants to make sure at the end of the day they're not stuck having to remove them as well. So I'm sure the means are out there to accomplish this, and as these projects take place, that can be addressed, but it, does it make sense, Jeff, to give, you know, flexible language to reasonable assurances, whether that's in the form of, uh, letters of credit or, or insurance or requirements, uh, is that possible, something along those lines?
Well, I'm thinking that, you know, there's been a lot of flexibility given at the beginning of that. If we take out the, you know, the suggestion that you put it in phases and, and if, if, if it's, if it's kinda a regular thing, then they can propose it without us suggesting that this is an idea.
Can I interject there?
Yeah.
When I'm reading this sentence, my interpretation is that the applicant may propose, but we're not giving them permission to go for up till five years before. They may propose some type, I mean, commissioning of the assurance over a few, a few years, but it's just a proposal they're making, we're not actually granting it at, at this point, it would be part of their proposal, am I correct in that interpretation?
I mean, how many times have we seen, I mean, not just here, but anyplace, I mean, if somebody makes a great pitch, boy, this is the greatest thing since sliced bread, and then it just totally blows up.
It happens.
Yeah.
Just.
No, what I'm saying is.
That possibility.
Yeah.
I mean, I may be dating myself, or wasn't there a cartoon character or anything, Wimpy, I'll gladly pay you Tuesday for a hamburger.
Tuesday for a hamburger today, yes.
That's very good.
We're showing our age here.
Yes.
I never heard that.
Uh, yeah, the idea is that, you know, if you put it in here, maybe it's creating a suggestion that, that might make it more likely that someone will try to go that way. And if there's a deny, then they might think they're not being treated fairly. If we take it out and let their financial people figure it out and they propose something, well, they can do that. They don't, we don't need to tell us they can propose it. No matter what they propose, they can, oh, you know, you can accept it or not accept it.
I think I would be more comfortable with that.
Yeah. Yeah.
And since we're on decommissioning costs, you know, the, the, one of the other key things in, in that is, you know, how much is that cost gonna be? Okay, so I think that the language should be more specific in terms of how that is, is calculated, so for example, if you, if you know that it's gonna cost you a thousand bucks, and, these are just numbers, a thousand bucks today, if I had a thing that I had to decommission, that's all well and good. But if that is gonna happen twenty years down the line, I'm gonna need a hell of a lot more than a thousand bucks in order to accomplish that. So there's a, so there's a, you know, whether it's today's dollars or future dollars or subject to some inflation rate or whatever, it has to be somehow built into that thing.
Then, Dan, I think maybe maybe was it your that puts their caught or they figured a hundred fifty percent? Was it, wasn't it your that does it?
Yes.
And I think that takes into account the, the cost of living.
Right.
Yeah.
Issue.
I think in the end, this gold rush on solar, if you will, and it is, statewide, there's a tremendous amount of interest because of the, uh, legislation last year and the net metering changes and all. You know, in some ways, we're learning as we go along and what the best practice will be, you know, as they put these solar fields online, and there are some ahead, obviously, ahead of any projects you haven't even taken up yet. Leave you the flexibility to learn from that and apply a reasonable standard to ensure, again, that, that there is a, a plan for decommissioning. But as to what the, what the right plan is right at this moment, it's difficult. But as to what the, what the right plan is right at this moment, it's difficult because there's not a lot of case history yet.
And so what, what comes out of that, then? Just that they, that they would propose how much the decommissioning cost would be, or?
Well, I think that, yeah, that they, out of their plan, and that the language is clear that you all as the, what is it you call it? Project administrator?
Yes.
The project administrator have the tools to address it. And every situation may be different. There are some companies, if, you know, you have a AAA credit comes in, you know, then their signature means a lot. And if it's a standalone company just to do this one project, then they need backup, whether it's letters of credit, or insurance, or whatever. So the tools may be different depending on the situation.
Also, you could look at it differently. You could take your 150%. You could have the developer give you the installation cost of putting all these panels in, multiply it by 150, and then that could be what they put in escrow. Because whatever you, the cost of taking it out is what we're going to have for a cost. It's going to be some salvage fee to that. Most of that's aluminum or stainless steel.
Or something.
And carpet. It's going to be a residual amount we're going to be able to get back.
Yeah, there's salvage value.
There, yeah.
If we could determine what it was to put it in, we could probably almost estimate what it, what it costs to take it out. It's going to come a lot quicker than when it went in.
And, and I'm not saying that you should put this in your language, but you could also require, I don't even know what the term would be, a peer review, like we do with engineers sometimes. You have to look at their decommissioning plan, and you know what? They think as a third party is a reasonable standard. Because Jeff's right. I mean, we don't want to make it onerous to come here, but the, it's a simple objective. Let's ensure that this is decommissioned properly, and we're not stuck with it. So show us a path for getting there. I don't know if I've clouded it more than I've held here, but...
Well, one thing I want us to remember is that this section isn't just for solar projects. It, it needs to apply to other things potentially. And, and to, see, the idea, I didn't like the 150 because it was somewhat random based on, you know, the idea that, you know, we're going to have so much inflation for how many years. But, but some of these, some of these things that may, may fall into this category, you know, may have a lot shorter or a lot longer period. So the 150 is not really going to fit very well in everything. So the idea of the 100 was by describing it this way, is that they're, they're projecting out, you know, in the future and saying, this is how much it's going to cost to clean this up. And, 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 you know, the idea is at that date. So if they're reasonable about it, they're going to, they're going to be inflating that number, but it's, but what it costs to do it tomorrow, but 20 years from now.
So if you just, if you just refer to at the, and maybe already have, at the end of the useful life, and you throw it on them to figure it out for you.
Sufficient funds to decommission. It's best as one can calculate.
At the end of its useful life.
And I think that's where you tie in the peer review.
Yeah.
You know, to give it to some other expert to say, do you agree with the developer's figures?
Oh, so you're saying that we should put in here, I missed it, a provision that says that we would expect a peer, we would...
Well, no, I was just, no, actually, I prefaced that they say, I'm not suggesting you put it in your language. But you could, just like on any project, if you want a third-party peer review, correct?
Yeah.
You know, to, to, it's all more like accounting than it is engineering. But nonetheless, like I say, the, the best practice on this is going to evolve as we gain more experience. So the, the magic formula may change.
But I think it's important to get, to get something in here.
Yeah.
So that, you know, you have the basis of some change later on.
Yeah.
And you're covered, hopefully.
I mean, boy, doesn't my language on peer review, would that now cover something like this?
Yes, there would be a, the, the developer's cost to cover that peer review.
If we were as the city on city land negotiating with a solar developer, we would certainly want those assurances and would negotiate, and we would want to consult with somebody smarter than we are to, you know, somebody in the solar field that understands this. But you don't have to. That's just, again, a prerogative of the planning board.
So I have a suggestion. If you go back to the first sentence under E, it says, based on the estimated cost to implement the decommissioning plan at the, at the estimated date of decommissioning, and then put in there, maybe in parentheses, adjusted for inflation, the applicant shall demonstrate in the form of a performance bond. So you, you talked, so it's clear that we're talking about a number that's not for current day, but it's, it's, if it's 50 years from now, you know, you need to apply some reasonable inflation rate to that.
But if I go back and read that sentence, I mean, I think that, that sentence actually does capture it. Because it says, the estimated cost at the estimated time of decommissioning. And you don't have to say anything about inflation because it's, it's implicit.
Yeah.
I think it is, but I, if you said it, then it would...
Well, then it's for sure, yeah.
I mean, and theoretically, if you, not, and again, I'm not suggesting this, but if, if a, a landowner negotiated a solar deal with a solar company as a lease, putting it on their land, and they said, hey, we want you to have money in the bank to, to make sure the decommissioning, theoretically, you could put it in a bank account, and it should earn at least enough interest every year to grow to that amount on its own. But...
Right. Yeah, and, and there is historic data. I mean, you look at the, what do they call it? The, the figures, there's an index.
Right.
That, that, that measures inflation over time.
Consumer price index.
There you go.
Yeah.
So if you, if you were going to say, ours is, ours is going to be down in 20 years, and, and you could say, well, in the last 20 years, there was this much inflation. We will use that number. You know, it's probably as good as any.
Yeah, no, but I, I think, I think this first sentence here, whether or without the, the inflation part actually does cover it.
Yeah. And all I was trying to say is, I think you're going to have the tools to apply, you know, to these situations. And I, I just want to note that under the new renewable energy credits and net metering provisions, you know, a lot of the soul, proposed solar projects around the state are, you know, I know a lot of them are like going up to 20 acres, you know, because 20 acres is where you kick in site location and development. So they're trying to keep them under 20 acres because you can move faster. So that is not, you know, unreasonable that you may be looking at some projects on that scale.
Are we ready for abandonment?
Are you going to remove that sentence? Are you going to remove that sentence?
Yes, remove the...
Phase.
The phases one.
Yeah, right.
And if it's all right with you, I will add an adjustment for inflation, just so it's clearer. Because some of us got it and some of us didn't, and it's likely the way it's going to be, you know, in the future.
Sure, it's clear.
We won't be... Abandonment provisions. A facility under the authority of this section 825 shall be considered abandoned after it ceases to function according to its intended use for more than one year. Determination of abandonment shall be made by the code enforcement officer. If the owner or operator of the facility fails to carry out the decommissioning plan within one year of abandonment of the proposed date of decommissioning, or the proposed date of decommissioning, the city retains the right to use any and all legal and available means necessary to do so at the owner-operator's expense.
The only question I had there is, what if the owner and the operator are different people? Could that be? Sure. You know, I own this, but I employ, it just seems owner slash operator might be. I don't know. Never mind.
You know, maybe the better term was just to stick with owners.
Now, if, if they're leasing the land, I'm going to leave that in there for that.
So if we said facility owner, then it would not the landowner, it's the, it could be equipment.
Well, it seems to me if you made it, if you made it the owner, that's who we would go after. And if there's an operator involved, then the owner would go after the operator, seems to me.
I was never an English major, but would that be a place that you want to put in and or?
Well, that, that would be the other option. You know, meaning that if there's two, yeah, right. Wouldn't be a bad choice for an and or.
So I would like to say, so at the facility owner and or operator's expense.
I'm sorry, say it again.
At the, add the word facility to modify owner, so we're not talking, not confused with the landowner.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If there is, I don't know, if there's a landowner, we probably...
Well, if you're, if there's a landowner out there, then, you know, our concern about the decommissioning kind of goes away, right?
Well, it only...
I mean, between the guy that owns the property and the guy that had the thing on the property. And, you know, why would we mess around with it?
Well, the only time we would is if, if it was, if it was seen as an eyesore or something that you wanted to get out of there.
So we would act preemptively in some way.
Well, if it's abandoned, it's been abandoned for a year, and, and they had, actually, because they're given a year from the point of abandonment, which means they stopped operations for a year, and now it's abandoned, they have a year now to do the, do the, the decommissioning and removal. So it's two years the thing hasn't been, been used. Yeah. I, I'd be happy just, you know, so if the landowner, I don't, you don't even know, there could be a lot of different situations. So if we leave it as owner and or operator.
Now, would this be an incident where it may be prudent to add, get a legal opinion as to how exactly that's worded? I'm just so, I mean, if somebody, you know, I always look at the worst-case scenario that if, if there was a, this was a leased property, and, and all of a sudden something goes to heck, and the owner, we say, okay, somebody's got to clean it up, and they, they do, you know, well, it's your, you're the operator, you clean it up. Well, you're the owner of the property, you clean it up.
Yeah. Why would you like to speak to that?
Is there, is there, I mean, does the city have an attorney that reviews this kind of stuff?
We do have an attorney available, yes, yeah.
That reviews this kind of stuff?
Yeah, if we ask them, yeah.
It seems to me that, you know, one, that would almost be, you know, just kind of the way things operate is us to fiddle around with it, and then, you know, you get the final words and then pass it through that attorney and make sure there's no...
I can answer John's question, that might help. If you, if I'm renting from you, and I make a terrible mess in that yard, I don't get the letter to clean it up, you do as the owner of the property. I think that would hold true for this same situation. It's going to fall upon the owner to clean it up because it's their property. And if they abandon it, that owner, if he pays taxes, it's a possibility, and you've got to talk with Larry Ganna, he may end up owning it anyway, if it's abandoned on his land for so long. So, but typically, we go after the property owner if we have an issue.
Yeah, so, so worst-case scenario, the city would do it, and just put a lien against the property?
Right, we'd have to go through probably Title 17.
Yeah, no, that, I mean, I'm sure there's a rigmarole that's involved, but...
Right, right, yeah. Or the court could give us permission to go take, if it's, if we consider it a hazard, the court could give us permission to go clean it up, and then we could assess a special realitates, real estate tax to recoup on land.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. And if we get to a recommendation, you might want to add to it that you recommend that this be reviewed by the city attorney before it goes to the planning?
City council.
The city council?
What do you all think about on paragraph B, where it says, the city retains the right to use any and all legal and available means necessary? An insertion of funds there? Legal, and somehow referencing any funds that are available?
So where are you?
It's paragraph B, the last line, it's actually one sentence, but the very last line. All legal, and I'm wondering about some kind of insertion of, and funds or monies available.
Are you thinking about the, the fund that was set aside for the, so, yeah.
Just referencing it there, I don't know.
I would like the attorney to look at it.
And I think that would be on the available means, yeah, means could be the fund.
Yeah, I think, I think they're meaning to, you know, say that accessing that, which has been made clear that it would be available to the city, but somehow that thing gets, you know, everything kind of falls apart. I don't know how, you know, it might happen if it's, if it's a legal assurance, but it does open it up broader for whatever other means that the city might have.
Any other questions of Jeff? This is scheduled for public hearings. I'll open the public hearing. So you know if there's somebody here to address, and I'll close the public hearing. Where's the, where's your plan of, do we, do you feel comfortable enough to approve the adoption for recommendation of the council? Would you rather see a clean copy before we do that? You know, instead of taking this document and, you know, making our additions and deletions verbally versus saying, table yet?
Well, what, what did you come into the room expecting, wanting?
Well, we, we do have a timeframe on this.
Okay, that's...
And there will be a public hearing at the council, council meeting, so anyone can make an amendment at that time, too. You know, I, I think, I think there is a timeframe on this.
Well, yeah, the city's hoping that, there are projects that are about ready to jump in the pipeline.
Okay.
So we, we don't want you to have nothing for the planning board to use it, because if we don't get it through council soon, then, then there will be, none of this will apply.
So when does the council meet?
Well...
February 10th.
Yeah.
Sorry?
Monday.
So they meet the Monday after we do? So...
Well, not typically, but because of the holiday they are this month.
Okay.
Yeah.
And hopefully we can...
So I guess, I guess the bottom line, though, is you all know what's in the pipeline better than we do. If, if we say, oh, let's have it back for one last look at the next meeting, is that going to really inconvenience everybody and screw up the whole thing, or, or not?
Well, I, I hope that we're not, you know, that far away. I think I...
I don't think we are, no.
So, yeah, it certainly would be better if we could move it on to the council. I mean, they're, they have, they're...
Sooner rather than later.
Yeah. I mean, they might end up changing the whole thing, too, so, you know.
Well, how about, how about this? Can we see a, can you circulate, I mean, I don't know whether this is within the way we do things, but if you just could circulate the cleaned-up version, you know, make any minor changes and stuff like that, and then have it looked at, reviewed by the attorney, and off you go. I mean, can we do that?
No.
No, never mind, that was a bad idea.
That type of quorum, did you have?
Right.
That's an official word.
But, I mean, what, what you could do is recommend that it be recommended to the city council with the changes, the amendment, and the changes that were discussed. And I think we were clear enough. I mean, we talked about the actual language changes.
Okay, let me take a shot at this. I'll make a motion that we accept the proposed amendments and additions to chapter 56, you know, five development ordinance, article three zoning districts, article 14 definitions, article eight performance standards. Kerry, you can add the, the rest. As, as presented with the following additions and or deletions. Under section 823, paragraph H, it would read, applicants for large, for medium-scale and large-scale systems shall submit a plan pursuant to section 825 of this ordinance.
And that has to be a recommendation to the council for approval.
Yes, I know this is going to go with the council, but, I mean, taking this document that Jeff gave us... this document that Jeff gave us...
Make these changes and add them.
And adding that, yeah. That you, that's what you present to the council.
And that's what we would vote on, is that's...
Okay. Then, in section 825, paragraph E, the sentence, "The applicant may propose securing the necessary financial assurances and phases as long as the total required financial assurance is in place, a minimum of five years prior to the estimated date of decommissioning of the facility is strictly..."
We were going to add it adjusted for inflation in that first sentence?
I think the way it's written now covers, I mean, it...
You all agree that it's not necessary?
No. I mean, I don't believe it is.
All right. It's out.
I mean, I think those were the two additions and deletions.
Well, then, under abandonment provisions, section, paragraph B, Jeff, didn't you want to add facility owner?
I think we decided to go with, at the expense of the owner and/or operator.
So, that'd be an addition?
Facility owner, because you want to differentiate between the landowner and the facility, the thing, right?
Well, I think we talked about it, that maybe the landowner needs to go after, sometimes one of the other owner. If there is an abandonment, actually, the landowner might end up owning the facility.
Oh, right, yeah, 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 yeah.
I mean, I think the way Dwight explained how enforcement action happens between a lessor and leasee, I think the wording of paragraph B is sufficient.
To just leave it as it is?
Yep. Now, do we want to ask for this to be reviewed by council?
Reviewed by legal council?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, not the city council. I meant, before it goes to the city council, do we want to request Jeff to submit, the city to submit it to the, our legal council for review?
Would the council, would the city council normally have that done anyway, or not?
Well, it's probably most efficient if you do it with the final version that the city council puts together. So, maybe you could recommend that it go for review at, in its final version.
Prior to adoption.
I mean, the city council may change it, so, yeah, it'd probably make more sense to, the city council wanted legal counsel to review it, do it at that point.
Can you actually make that thing as the chairperson?
The presentation to the council?
No, 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 the motion.
I just did.
I know, but is that legal?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, John Fink does it all the time when nobody else...
Does he?
Right. There you go.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the deputy planning office requests clarification from the planning board regarding ordinance thresholds determining which applications need to review for approval by the planning board. Back up, Jeff.
Oh.
Dwight.
Or both.
Do we have your memorandum dated January 22nd?
So, this is another item that's come back from last month, there was a lot of discussion about this, and there was no recommendation made, so I put together the draft motion, hoping to encapsulate as best I could what the wishes of the board were. I expect that, you know, you want to look at it, and just like with the last one, you can make any amendments and adjustments to this, but at least we have something to work from. And would you like me to read it?
No.
No.
No offense, no.
No, fine, huh?
That's why God made paper, right?
Yes.
I mean, are you proposing that, you know, on your draft motion, that this wording is instituted into the ordinance, into section 604-1?
No.
Is that, no?
No. Well, number one says it's to be interpreted, so we're looking at the current language, and we're interpreting it like this, because that's the question right now, until we can address the ordinance by amending it, we have to deal with it as it is. So, this is how we're going to deal with it as it is. And then two is regarding current language, it talks about, you know, possibly revising it in the future.
So, my question is, under the, your proposed interpretive language, okay, would, for example, the dock-in-the-box development have, if we were to apply this, would that have come to the planning board?
The dock-in-the-box?
The thing that...
Convenient...
Are you a dock, you're having to harbor for a minute? Under this, yes.
The crank on the side.
A dock-in-the-box.
Well, come up with a better short term, you know? Or if I just enshrine that in your brain forever, right? Okay, so the answer was yes, that, under this, okay.
But, I would like to, I'd like to have the planning board make this, to recommend this to the plan, to the council also, so that it can get in the groundwork of getting amended. Because it's, if someone's challenge is this, I don't know what grounds we would have to defend it, if they say our ordinance is different. But if we send it to the council, and they agree with it, we can make that amendment a lot quicker. See what I'm saying? Just like we're doing now.
Absolutely, I mean, and that's why I asked Jeff, because, I mean, you know, if we're saying, this is how we want you to interpret it, okay, it should be in the ordinance.
It's got to be in the ordinance.
Yeah.
Why? I mean, because you're, you're looking at the current ordinance and saying you don't agree with the way it's being applied, the way it's being interpreted. So, I mean, the, the language is vague enough, so you could interpret it one way or the other. And what I'm saying is, we're going to clarify that, you know, by, by making a suggestion to the administrator of how to interpret it, because it can be interpreted in more than one way, the current language, and, but understanding that's not the best, that's not the best way to deal with this, but it's only, it's only, you know, something that can, that could happen tomorrow.
Was like a stopgap.
Yeah.
Well, my only issue, Jeff, is that this, some of this came from the council, so I think they ought to, you know, be able to...
Well, I don't, personally, I don't see any problem with having the council get to see it and, and adopt it, I mean, do you?
No, I mean, that was, that was the way I figured it was going.
Or just recognize it as being the interpretation we're going to have.
Yeah, that we're, this is the official interpretation going forward.
Good, right. The council weighing in is good.
I think what we're trying to do is not say, this is, whether we put it in the manual, this is our interpretation, no, this is fact, this is how we're going to deal with it. And I don't see why that, this is such a big deal.
The fact is the language on the page, but the language on, the fact is the language on the page in the ordinance, but it's, people reading it come up with different conclusions as to what it means.
And that's why we want to change it in the ordinance.
Right, exactly.
So, there's not, so it's not open for interpretation. And I think that's, and I think that the way we're going about this is a simple way to do it, that we change the, that section 604...
That you actually make the change now.
I still want John Fink's input on this. I'm considering, I mean, he's got more experience on the planning board than all of us together.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think this is as urgent as the solar thing. I mean, I'd like to see some changes made, but I prefer John Fink's input in this.
Yeah, we'd all like to hear what he has to say.
And to make these changes, I mean, and part of the thing is, is that, you know, that the demolition doesn't count towards, you know, the square footage. I mean, that can be easily written in the ordinance, and not say, well, this is how we're going to interpret it. I mean, Dwight may be gone, you know, two years from now, somebody else comes in.
Please God, let it be so, eh?
Well, that's why we have point two. What we've learned is it takes a long time to get these things through, so it gives somebody, you know, and so maybe this, you don't have to have an official, maybe, you know, we've already got the message as to how you want to interpret this, we don't have to put it on paper, you know? And so, if you want to just wait until we can change the ordinance, then I'm fine with that.
How often is the ordinance changed for things like this, or a new, I mean, or do we kind of collect them and say, oh, we need to do a wholesale revision of the ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, you, you can do, I mean, little things one at a time, and...
Well, that's my question, is how often does that happen?
You try, try to avoid that, I mean, I think this, this ordinance has been substantially changed, it's been a long time, actually, since, since anything was done with it, but I'm sure Dwight can remember better than I could. I've looked at some of the records, I mean, there've been changes to the zoning map, and, you know, things like that, but actually changing the land use part of it, the ordinance part of it, I think it's been years.
So, surely there must have been other kinds of interpretations that came up over that, no, there haven't been?
No.
Okay.
Well, it was, it was something that was done between the planning office and the code office, so the interpretation was arrived at by those...
For this particular thing?
Yeah, for those, and, and I think, you know, only this recent project with the convenient M.D. brought to light, you know, the fact that the planning boards, you know, saw a project that said, well, we don't agree with the interpretation.
So, if we ask John Fink what he has to say, the question would be, do we make this small incremental change at this point to the actual ordinance, or do we have a clarification thing that we actually have to kind of invoked and blessed? I mean, is that what you're going to ask him?
My thought would be to discuss this section with John. Now, we also talked last month about changing the 5,000-square-foot threshold.
Right.
Dwight wasn't here, I'd be more than happy to hear his thoughts on that, but I also want to hear John Fink. You know, once we, this is not urgent to change this, because it does have to go to the council to be approved. You know, once we sit down and listen to it again, my belief that 5,000-square-foot figure should be lower. Maybe I'm the only one that feels that way. Maybe Dwight can persuade me to keep it at 5,000. I'm more than happy to hear his opinion on it.
Yeah. On that point, you, last month, asked us to do a little research, and the ordinances that I could find that were the most similar in nearby municipalities were Bar Harbor and Brewer, and it's interesting, because Bar Harbor, the threshold is 400 square feet.
Oh.
And in Brewer, it's 20,000 square feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a large variance there by definition.
So, I can go to 10,200 square feet, square right in the middle.
I mean, how, what would you feel about the, that figure, the 5,000 square feet?
We started at 1,500, and that 5,000 square feet is one of the ones that came right from the council. And the, people go through the same process. We have a TIT meeting, sewer water, everyone's there. The reason we went, and Michelle and I got together on this, and our philosophy was simple, it may be flawed, but it was simple, if you're already permitted for roughly a 3,600-square-foot building, all the utilities are there, and you go into a project which has two, two or three drive-throughs, because it was a bank, and you go into a project that has less traffic, then if you're already permitted for 3,600, then going 5,300 is not a big difference. That was the philosophy behind it. Now, that could have been flawed, I'm not, you know me, I'm far from perfect, but that's, that's how the rationale come out, is the decision between Michelle and I, and the TIT, and everyone looked at the project, and...
I wonder when it was that the 1,500 square feet got changed to 5,000?
2012, oh, 2012, don't I wish.
Yeah, that's right, isn't it?
Yeah, 2012.
Longer ago than that.
2012.
Yeah. That was when we added the big revision to the land use ordinance.
2012?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought it was longer ago than that.
We were working on it for...
For six years.
Yeah.
Yeah, 2012. To our office, it doesn't make any difference to us.
I mean, I...
So, if there's no, if there's no, if there's no dire emergency, and I get that there isn't, let's just get DeLeo's, I'm sorry, DeLeo, no, you're DeLeo, Fink, Fink's input on this, and that's fine with me. And in the meantime, if something should come up, think of this.
Yeah, there's not, there's not an issue with staying at the 5,000 square feet, you know, that's what the, I don't, that doesn't bother me.
Well, upon reflection, I mean, you know, the, tearing the whole thing down, starting over again, with what in essence is a brand-new development, that was a bigger thing to me personally than, than necessarily the square footage.
So, at this point, I would suggest that we table this until the next meeting. Motion on that?
Second, do you need that?
I guess we got a motion to table it.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
We got a Mylar.
I got a question though on Mylars, where, Mac brought Mylar's mind, he also brought it last week. When somebody brings Mylars to a meeting that we approve it, have you had, you guys had a chance to make sure everything on there is correct? You see what I mean? We approved this plan tonight.
And there's Mylar signing too.
Just Mylar's to sign.
Well, it's a good question, I mean, I assume it's the same plan that he submitted, but I could take a...
Would it be prudent to sign them next month, or...
Can they move forward with their sale or whatever they were doing?
Well, I think that was, that was last month, this is just to fix Dr. Piaz's...
Well, he's, he's waiting on a sale, too.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
I mean, I could take a look and make sure it matches what we did review. I don't think he's changed anything, I mean...
Yeah, I think, if you could just take a look at it quick, ask for a motion for adjournment.
A motion to adjourn as soon as this happens.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.